Folks, we are going to go ahead and get started. First and foremost, thank you for joining us this evening for a special meeting. As you know, this is a presentation from the folks who are involved and responsible for the fort and the beginning of a large development project in Marion Village. So very excited to hear from them. Because this is a special meeting, we won't be operating under our normal presentation method of five-minute presentation, five minutes for questions and five minutes for responses. First, we'll invite the development team that is here with us tonight to introduce themselves and then speak about the project, of course, share the variances that they're requesting and any other information that might be relevant to the overall project. Once they've had the opportunity to do that, we will then open up the floor for questions. You can feel free to use the raise hand feature in Zoom. I'll also allow people to just kind of unmute themselves and jump in when we open the floor. And if you're more comfortable, you can feel free to type a question in chat and we'll try to keep an eye on that. Just a reminder, please, no interruptions of others who are speaking. We want to make sure there's no feedback and then everyone gets an opportunity to speak and certainly to ask their questions. So just hoping everyone has a good meeting and I will turn the floor over now to our zoning chair Tate Wooding to just introduce a general project.
Great, thank you, Justin. Again, thank you all for coming and letting us listen to this presentation. The team did share some slides, so I'll be sharing my screen here right now and we're going to go ahead and I'll share the floor with them. David and David, Kyle and Justin, you can go ahead and the floors yours.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll just briefly get started here. Good evening, everyone. David Hodge, attorney for the applicant and property owner on the project. I'm gonna, I think, first kick it over as we get going to the people that are most important here and let them walk through these slides. You know, just one by one, somewhat slowly, Tate, thank you for having this up there. We'll go through this. This is a, this is a really a great presentation package. As Justin and Kyle finish up with kind of a broad stroke overview of the project, hopefully we can circle back to me for the boring zoning aspect of this. So I guess with no further ado, let me kick it over to either Justin or Kyle, whoever wants to talk about the project. Do you want to kick it off?
Go ahead, Kyle. I'll offer a very quick overview. The, the big picture here is the conversion of thirty-eight acres to a village, a community that's constituted by a thousand apartments plus minus and approximately four hundred thousand square feet of commercial space, majority of which exists today. Justin in twenty seventeen came down here to move his company Fortner Upholstery. Many of you know this already, fourth generation Columbus business and took about fifty thousand square feet, about twenty-five percent of the fort. And opening up space to others and found very quickly that it was being absorbed by a lot of creative users and makers. To the point now where all available space has basically been digested. This wonderful community has emerged and our ambition is to capture the DNA of this community, this maker community and basically amplify it across the campus. Justin, by the way, break in anytime you'd like. The best thing about this project is proximity. We view, we, if you in.
You got muted, Kyle. You're off. Now, now you're muted again. Okay.
Do we have the Rapid Five drawing here?
Yes. Tate, if you would, if you would scroll down through.
It's proximity to downtown. You all know very well. In fact, Tate, can you go back up one? I'm sorry. I think this is a useful slide. These two shows proximity to downtown. And if you'd go one more now. This, of course, shows our relationship to Marion Village and that we're anomalous geographically that we're not directly connected to the typical work you have in terms of variance requests. But we're here with you tonight. And you want to keep going down again? Keep going down, keep going down, down. There. Thank you. This is a great image. One backup, please. I'm sorry, Tate. Thank you so much. This comes from the Rapid Five book. Many of you, I think, are familiar with Rapid Five and their efforts. And what we've had recently announced and Justin can speak about this because he's longed to have this green connection made made real. And we've recently heard of it being made real through the connection along the old canal corridor, which is currently an AEP easement that will bring a walking path and bike path to the fort through from Audubon, crossing over one oh four. So connecting connectivity from even Marion Village residents, Hungarian, all of the villages flowing west tying into this park. And then the green space will be offering within Steelton Village. Steelton Village is, by the way, a storied name. I'm a fourth generation Columbusite, as is Justin. I think Justin may be fifth generation. And I'm a Columbus lover, love the history of the city. I'd never heard the term Steelton before. But it's been unearthed and Justin is dedicated to bringing it back. And it's perfectly appropriate and we're very excited to have Steelton Village alive again. That's a really quick overview of the location, the big theme. I want to be careful not to take too much time. Justin, what would you color this with, if anything?
You know, and for me, guys, some of the, my connection is unstable here. I'm having a hard time. Unfortunately, Wi-Fi not performing really great right now, but you know, I would just say that, you know, we moved our company down here five years ago and have enjoyed being part of the South Side community to elaborate on the trail system just a little bit. You know, that would be, we've committed to a trailhead that would create access points for the broader community to come through the community on the west side. The multifamily development to access that trail, which would connect to South Audubon and for the south. Yeah, I I see your note there, Jess. Hopefully that helps if my turn off my video feed, that makes the audio perform a little bit better.
It does.
Okay. Great. Okay.
We see this as a, and in terms of being a village, we view this as an entirely walkable community with amenitization that allows our residents and neighbors around us to come to restaurants, bars. We have signed, you probably have seen, a deal with City Winery, which we're very proud of. It's a national group with thirteen locations across the country. That's owned by a guy named Michael Dorf, who has made a career out of discovering new neighborhood, starting with Brooklyn before Brooklyn was Brooklyn in the late mid eighties. So we were so pleased that he chose Steelton Village for the City Winery location in Ohio. It's first in Ohio. And we have a lot of live music that we think will be a help to the neighborhood. We very much want to bring that here.
That's great overview, guys. And so Tate, if you'll scroll down several, there is a zoning map, which I would ask you to stop at just to show exactly the site we are, we are here on tonight. One more, I think. Yes. All right. So that is the property that we are dealing with tonight. On the west side of High Street, you can see Viaduct Drive down there along High and then the site outlined in black. That background color is purple. That is an M manufacturing zoning classification. You know, this is a historically industrial location of our community and the M district has historically been the appropriate classification there. The M zoning, the, the M zoning allows practically everything you can imagine in terms of manufacturing and industrial type land uses and the entire family of underlying commercial uses. So all of the C one through the C four uses are allowed in this M. Tate, if you would flip back to the aerial photograph, the one above. Okay, you can see here the existing built environment on the property. Certainly some development, building, parking lot, some gravel areas along the southern portion of the property. And as you head up to the north, a little more of a green area here. The proposal is to change the zoning from the M district to an LC four district. The LC four allows us to take advantage of the existing mixed-use district under the Columbus Code. You guys have through the years seen, you know, a thousand of these types of applications with lots of variances associated with it. You know, that indicates that we really today have an imperfect zoning code. That is among the reasons that the city is actively rewriting it. But the best tool that we have today to create a mixed-use community like Kyle and Justin seek to create is that C four district. So we have requested rezoning to the LC four with a companion council variance. And Tate, you might flip over, go down a couple. We have a, we have a very conceptual site plan in here. There. On my screen, a portion of that is a little cutoff on the bottom. I don't know if you can scroll a little bit there. Okay, that's, that's perfect. So this is a little flipped around, but the, the left side of the screen is north. You can see High Street there in the center of the page. This is a conceptual site plan, but it shows the type of development that Kyle and Justin seek to achieve here, which is, which is mixed use with some commercial, some maker space intermixed with, with residential above. A lot of these will be standalone multifamily. A lot of these, it's expected will be mixed use. You know, vertically with, with commercial spaces on the first floor and units above. These gray shaded areas indicate existing buildings that will remain and be repurposed and continue to be used. Everything in white is, would be a new building. So the variances, so the zoning is to, is from the M to the LC four. The variances, the companion council variance, along with the rezoning application is to three different sections of code. The C four, it allows residential, it allows actually unlimited density residential, but it requires that residential that to be on top of first floor commercial uses. So we have a use variance here to allow us to have standalone multifamily residential buildings without commercial uses on the first floor. We have C four building setback and that is up along the South High Street frontage. The city says that any building needs to be set back fifty feet from the, from the High Street right of way. You can see that Building B and some of these other buildings down here, K and others, when, when Viaduct is down there, which which frankly isn't shown very well on this plan, those buildings are going to be closer than fifty feet to the public right of way. So we have asked for a variance to that requirement down to ten feet. And I know building setback variances are something this civic has seen many, many times. We also have minimum number of parking spaces required. What we are requesting is that rather than the one and a half per dwelling unit and the mix of parking ratios required for the various retail and eating and drinking establishment uses that we expect to be incorporated here that we get really an overlay type of treatment for that commercial space, a fifty percent reduction. So we're asking to provide one parking space per dwelling unit on the residential and a fifty percent reduction on the commercial parking. So that is, that's the zoning aspect of this. Like I said, it is the boring aspect of it, but it is what it is and it, and it is why we filed the application and are going through the city's process. A couple of other comments before I stop talking. We have attempted to be exceptionally thoughtful in how we bring this project forward. We have had a number of meetings with city planning and others at the city. Kyle and Justin more so than me, but I've been involved in, in a couple of those meetings. We have a traffic impact study underway that will tell us what, if any, improvements would need to be made to High Street. What the, you know, whether this intersection out the high needs to be signalized. We expect that it will be. Analyzing the, the parking reduction so that traffic impact study is well underway. We have also leading in to tonight hosted a joint meeting, just kind of an introductory overview meeting of the Columbus South Side Area Commission as well as the Far South Area Commission to bring everybody together and just introduce the project. This really, you know, kind of sits on the border, not only of Reed Hosack and Marion Village, but also of those two area commissions. So we wanted to bring everybody together for that introductory meeting. We also, yesterday, I'm going so fast, I get my days confused sometimes, but yes, yesterday had a meeting with the Reed Hosack Civic Association, reviewed much of this, actually Reed Hosack was on a little bit of another portion of this over on the east side of the street, but several of the Reed Hosack people attended that joint meeting of Columbus South Side and Far South. So with all that, I'll stop talking. It really is a great slide deck that, that Kyle and Justin and their design professionals have put together. So if anybody wants to scroll down through that, not that boring rezoning application, Tate, some of the, some of the better imagery, we can certainly comment on that and we'll stand by to answer any questions that, that folks have on, on this request.
Some, thank you. So if anyone has a question, please feel free to use the hand raised feature. Otherwise, I'm going to take our first question, which is in chat. And then after that, we'll also just open the floor if you're not able to quite use the hand raised feature. Also, just a quick note, we will be voting through our online voting form this evening. It is a drop form. I will be pasting the link in chat as we get closer to that portion. If you are a current member of the association, the Marion Village Association and you have been a paid member since or after, or since or before, I'm sorry, October twentieth, you'll be able to vote this evening. If you're not sure, there is a feature you can use to verify your membership. And of course, we will provide the provisional vote results this evening, but we will then go through and verify those for membership purposes before sharing them with the area commission. So just wanted to let everyone know what that process will look like. So the first question we have in chat, is there any abatement required in the development of this area or any environmental concerns from the site's history?
Yes, there are. The entire neighborhood obviously is, is environmentally impacted and one of the really great benefits of having developments like this take places is that they are required to take care of mitigate all of that. And that's indeed what we're doing, Lori. How are you, by the way? Congratulations on the appointment. Lori, we're going through a voluntary action program right now that will result in NFA letters, no further action letters. We believe by end of next year, maybe middle of next year, about three million dollars of abatement is going on right now. We hope that's wrapped up by the end of this calendar year. It may drag a little bit, but we're actively taking care of all of the environmental issues that exist on the site right now. And I hope that answered the question properly.
Thank you. And Lori, please feel free to follow up if you had more on that. I see a second question. What are the improvements being made east of High Street that were mentioned?
That were just mentioned by Dave?
Yep.
We, you know, we have, as many of you may recognize, there's a building at the corner of one oh four in South High Street that's been known as the Tire City Building. And it's charitably would be recognized as just kind of blighted. So we purchased that building about four months ago and we have a lease that's been executed with a seventy-five hundred square foot taproom, brand new startup business, great, wonderful people. They've got some history on the south side also. We have a lease outs to entertainment user out of Orlando, Florida that provides escape rooms, number one escape room experience in the country. We have another bank, a bank brand. We've had some banks talk to us about needing some southern representation in the south. We met with one of them today, in fact, about doing a branch that's more than a branch. We're trying to combine businesses into spaces where we can because we've really created this business ecosystem. We want to reinforce as we keep on developing. So that building is being, and that's what Dave was referring to, having successfully gone through the south side review last night for some variances. So that building is dedicated to retrofit on a retail and amenity use. Next to that's a topper building, another one that we control. And that's going to see most likely a restaurant. We begin that in earnest beginning of next year. Behind that is the City Winery Building, which they have, I believe, submitted for permit already on. They're out to bid right now, Lori. And then next to that is, of course, the fort itself with two hundred and twenty thousand square feet of space. We've got about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of that not occupied currently. We see that being developed over time. We also see a garage being added to the east side as well. We'll start that design plan probably in the next two quarters.
So Jess, I know her. I know there are several more questions in here, but I do want to, I want to go back and, and show everybody something on these slides that I think you'll find to be pretty fascinating and is an important component to the overall project. Tate, if you would go back to the site plan. Right there. So as you come, as you come off of High Street currently, there is a little road there called Viaduct. I don't know if it's street or drive, but it comes down sort of a long parallel with, with, with High Street down below the grade of High Street because they built a, a ramp over top of the railroad tracks. And that street is called Viaduct Street, if any of you have ever been down there, because there is actually a viaduct that goes under High Street. And it is beautiful and it's done. It's there. It's not something that anybody could, could go create, but it's there. And so what's going to happen is when folks are living in this new development or shopping over here or whatever, they can come here. They, they can park. They can actually get across High Street through the existing viaduct along a trail system that will come under High Street and wrap around here to the east side to get down to all of this office maker space and, and commercial uses being created and improved by Justin and Kyle on the east side. So this is all connected with a pedestrian access and pedestrian path, which is, which is awesome.
You know, the other thing I want to mention, if I may, is because we're neighbors, we're talking about a neighborhood is that, you know, South High Street, where we're located, straddling South High Street, our properties would proceed north from one oh four is a racetrack and it's dangerous and it's blighted and it's, it's terrible. So one of our ambitions also is traffic calming. Development itself is traffic calming because there's activity. There are things taking place. So one of our ambitions is to slow this down. We do also see a signal being added as well. So we see this as a, as a more friendly pedestrian environment with the next few years.
Thank you for that. Before I jump back into the questions from chat, Eric, you had your hand raised for a while. I just wanted to check, did you still have a question?
Yeah, I could ask it now. I put it in the chat. But yeah, I could just ask it. So the mockups with the trail connection look great as someone who, who's a proactive cyclist around that area. But I did notice that there doesn't really seem to be anything connecting like on High Street over the railroad bridge. I've walked that before. It's extremely unfriendly. Like unfriendly from an infrastructure point of view, place to walk. There's tons of cars going fast. It's pretty ugly. Are there any plans to work with the city to, to broaden that connection across the railroad bridge, like between Reed Hosack and, and your new development?
Love that, Eric. We truly would. Yeah, we, we are not right now with traffic. We're not quite there with that department yet. We're just literally talking to them about the traffic impact study, what they want covered, where they want it covered. But what you're talking about makes perfect sense to us and it would be great to have a better connection there. Absolutely.
Eric, if you guys can hear me as well, the Metro Parks has a proposal out that's publicly available. And they submitted for federal funding to help support a trail system that would come along the AEP easement that comes through on the east side of the river. So a little bit different than what this original concept was. They found a more economic way to make a connector trail that stayed on the east side of the river. So that's available, if you, I think, on the, on the Rapid Five plan and on the Morphe side as well.
So if you were to get a block off of, two blocks on High Street and connect to that trail and take that south. And I believe, Justin, they're looking at bridging over one oh four with that as well.
That's right. That's part of the proposal.
Yeah, they've got parks down, significant investments in parks to the south as well. That's, I mean, this is very important to us. One of the things we'd like to have is a bike store also, Eric, for the bikers. I mean, we went over to talk to Anderson Concrete, who's right behind us, who controls all that land. Thinking, oh my God, this is going to be hard. Will these guys bike to work when they can? It's amazing what we're finding bikers. It's wonderful. So everyone's all for this.
So kind of expanding on that discussion with parks, the next question in chat is, is the proposed park space intended to be accessible to the public or intended for residents only?
The, there's, yeah, right. That's right. And the idea is that there would be a trail system that would connect some of the metro parks. And there would be, we would, we have offered to connect that trail system for the west of our site to High Street. And so through our site would create that access to that trail that would get you connected to those metro parks.
We offered some funding also for that as well, to try and help the park system by being an investor in this as well. So we said we would invest some funds and where we can, a trailhead to try and get people from High Street to, as an entrance point to the path. We see us as being a bridge to that. And that's important to us. We want to bring people up selfishly. We very much want people to take a break from biking, come up to, to Honest Friend and have a beer. And we want to engage people in this, in this, in our village. It's very important to us.
All right, we've got a next question. You mentioned providing residential for young professionals. Is there any provisions in the development for affordable housing or entry level housing?
Great question. We, before we even started our formal process with the city, we invited Aaron Prosser, who is the strategist. He had housing and guiding to come down and visit us at the site. And we were actually with the mayor about two weeks ago. We know how important affordable housing is to the mayor and to Aaron and to the city. So our ambition is to do so. Our ambition is to do so as creatively as possible, not just to make it a commodity checking off the box, but really, really understanding what that can look like. So we're looking and we've challenged Aaron to come back to us with best practice nation, best practices nationwide that the city would like to see. So we're open to anything and everything. We also want to protect the arts. This is something that's very important to the city. This is something very important. We talked about the DNA of the fort in Steelton. We think the arts need to have a permanent home here. And we're actually dedicated to making sure that there's space at the fort that is affordable to allow for experiential users to come in, not only from our village, but from, from the neighborhood, whether it's the print shop, the kiln shop for classes on Thursday night, whatever it may be. Other fun, you know, I've got to be careful. I'll go on and on. We're talking about putting a dog park down there. I mean, so Audubon's fantastic. We love Audubon. We need more dog parks in this town. So all kinds of fun stuff going on.
Thank you. I don't see any new questions in chat. If you did post something in chat and I missed it, please let me know. I, I don't want to miss anyone's questions. No hands raised at the moment. Is there anyone else that has questions about the proposal? Okay. Not seeing anything else. From this point on, we would be moving to voting. So I'm going to go ahead and paste the link for the ballot here in chat. Looks like someone, something else might have come in. One moment here. You can also, if you're calling in, you can access the voting ballot. If you're a current member from the front page of our Marion Village website, marionvillage.org, just scroll to the bottom and click vote. You can start casting those votes now. Otherwise, while that occurs, that'll take everyone a few moments. Certainly happy to keep the floor open for additional questions if folks have things they'd like to know.
I can also put up the actual zoning variances if anybody wants that as well. Let me vote first and then I'll.
Sounds good. And of course, on the ballot, we actually do have all of the language for the variances in the first item, which is the rezoning. So you'll be able to see that as you're voting as well.
The youngest member of our community, by the way.
Who is the youngest member of our community?
No, there is the youngest member of our community, Azalea.
Hello, Azalea, doing her civic duties. Okay, let's see here. So, all right, just going to check the progress. Looks like votes are starting to come in. And let's see here. Tate will display that information on the screen as soon as. And let's see here. Tate will display that information on the screen as soon as he's finished with his voting process, just so everybody's got a little bit of a refresher. Uh, I'll take this opportunity to plug our upcoming potluck while we're here and everyone's voting. So we are returning to our annual potluck for the first time since 2019. That's going to be on Saturday, December 10th, from 2 to 4 p.m. At Rumors at the corner of Stewart and Parsons. Rumors is also the host of the mural we installed this year. So very excited. This is a family friendly event. Um, please bring your, your family and your friends and your neighbors and come join us. Um, we're very excited to have this event back in play. So I'll get that plugged while we, I'll let everyone vote.
What a happy hour next Thursday too, if you can't wait for the potluck.
Good point. We have lots going on. Okay. How many votes we have in here? Just a moment, folks.
By the way, I'll put a plugin for City Winery, one of our newest clients. If you're not familiar with them, check out their website. It's going to be really neat to have them in town. They bring really great talent on the circuit through all of their spaces. So we're expecting to see some great names traveling through.
Fantastic. Okay, all right. So it looks like we've gotten several responses in. Um, is there anyone that is still in the process of voting and would like a few more moments? Okay. If everyone is finished, I'm going to go ahead and deactivate the ballot and give the final count that we have for this evening. Just a moment, everyone. All right, we received a total of 11 votes. Again, we'll go through and verify these afterwards before reporting to the area commission, just to make sure everything is accurate. Um, but in the 11 votes, we have the rezoning, which 10 supported. There was one abstention. Uh, so the number two item, which you can see here on the screen. Um, so I'll just follow along with those. So item. That is listed, I'm sorry, as number one on the screen. Uh, we have 10 in support and one abstention. Item number two on the screen, 10 support, one abstention. Item number three, 10 support, one abstention. And last but not least, item number four, 10 support, one abstention. So. Um, no opposing votes and we will pass these recommendations on to the area commission uh tomorrow.
Thanks everyone for the time tonight. We greatly appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for joining us for a special meeting. We do appreciate it. Um, and we do appreciate having the extra time tonight. Um, to look at your project since it is larger than um some of the others that we typically see in our, our monthly meetings. And we wanted to make sure we gave appropriate time. Um, and allow folks from neighboring villages to join in as well. So everyone, thank you so much for being here this evening. Uh, again, we'll see everyone at the potluck. We hope this is our final meeting of the year. Um, so other than that, we'll see everybody back in January. Everyone have safe and wonderful holidays. Thank you again for being here and take care.
Thank you. See you all.
Thank you.